I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a disciplinary hearing as recommended by Superintendent David Roach. It is set forth in a letter from the Superintendent dated January 3rd, 2011 to Carolyn Sales. Will the parties please identify themselves for the record, starting with Mr. Roach? David Roach, Superintendent of Lincoln County Schools. Tristan Lucas.
Tristan Lucas is Superintendent of Lincoln County Schools.
I'm Ms. Rick Boothby from Bowles Rice here representing the Position of the Administration.
Jerry Rayd Vaughn with the West Virginia Education Association. And real quickly, this is a closed session, correct? Let me give you that option.
Carolyn Sales.
Ms. Sales, you have the option of an open or a closed hearing. If you would like a closed hearing, this hearing would be dubbed in private.
I will not be closed.
I make a motion that we come to a end. The appointment. Motion's been made. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We have the approval of the Minutes for January 3rd, 2011, ready for meeting and the January 7th, 2011 Special Meeting.
I move.
Motion's been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anyone here for with public comments?
Yes, sir.
Let's move to the Administrative Section. Mr. Roach?
Yes, sir. As you see under A, Marsh University, that is a normal thing to do. Under B and C go together, this is professional development. This was agreed to by the school leadership teams of the respective schools. Moving on to D and E go together, I had shared with you at the last meeting, this kind of like gave you notice that this was going to be after the fact, and this is to approve, that person did come and this is over and they did a nice job.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Both these are on the same day, did they? Both present on the same day, but they were half-day each?
I'm not sure, but they were together, if I understand. Out-of-state travel for the following employees. David and Kimberly Cook go to Blackburn, and this is for the honor band, and that is a customary, normal thing that is done every year. Mr. Parsons to Fort Worth on his energy education conference, which he always brings new ideas and things back. And then the adult to ride the school bus, which is normal, and that's it, sir.
Okay. You all have heard the Administrative Section?
I move.
Motion's been made. Is there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Let's have it. Let's move to the Financial portion of the agenda. Ms. Gannon.
Okay. We have scheduled invoices to pay, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred one dollars, twenty-seven cents. I have copies of all invoices. Do you have questions on anything?
I just want to note I have no intention because my brother is off that board for the right to make a proper service statement.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question on invoices, all I said is, can you answer?
Okay. We need a motion.
I'll move.
Motion's been made to approve the Financial section. Is there any questions? All those in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Let's go to the Personnel Schedule. Ms. Lucas.
Okay. You all have the personnel schedule, and you have one addenda. They call it, we should have that.
You've got that.
If you take a few minutes, you won't, if you have any questions, please.
I guess I just sort of have a comment on the, not the addenda, the regular personnel. On the second page, we have recensions of retirements for two people.
Yes.
And I know it's been our practice in the past on to accept recensions and retirements. So could you explain?
Yes, and that is a correct assumption. In this particular case, there's a misunderstanding of the Administrator, and we have, where he had advised wrongly, gave information to two teachers, and therefore I assume it was our responsibility and our fault, because they did not understand. But it's in no way setting the stage for future recensions. This is again, I can take responsibility, although there's plenty of information out there, but because our Principal, he stood up and took kind of the blame for it, and I said, okay, in this case, I would like to recommend to the Board that he be rescinded. But again, I want the Minutes to reflect, in no way is this set in any kind of stage for the future. It is because it's the Administration's fault, meaning Superintendent's fault, that this happened, and not the employee. Okay? I'll remove that.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
I suppose now that Ms. Agnes has been back into the job from the central office to the high school secretary, you will be posting this position here?
She, yes, she did, and we will post that later.
It will be the same posting as far as what will be required?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you will be posting that position?
We will, yes.
Okay, before you ask for a motion to accept this, I'll have to refuse myself from the employment of extracurricular and extra-duty personnel, referring to Douglas A. and Albert E. Smith.
Okay.
Isn't it called that for years and years?
Let's go ahead and approve that, okay? I make a motion that we approve the employment of extracurricular and extra-duty personnel.
I see.
Please note that Ms. Smith has recused herself. Is there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Now I'd like to, I'll make a motion that we approve the rest of the Personnel Schedule. Is there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. More concerns?
I have just two quick things with Mr. Roach, he doesn't appear to update this on the high school sign. I know, I hate to ruin it. I want to know. And I think we have something to say. And this, thank you.
Before we get into that?
Yes.
Let's, we have another motion for a, to post a new position as a long-term substitute teacher.
I'm sorry? Yes.
So can we get a motion?
I move.
Okay, a motion is made to second, to post a new position as a long-term substitute teacher at Lincoln County High School for the remainder of the 2014-2015 school year. Is there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Duncan.
Well. I'm ready, I'm ready.
You're ready, okay.
I got the question. We had a survey done of the property over there to make sure that where we put the sign, maybe it was questionable that it would be on our property, that has come back and we can put the sign as you were shown in an earlier picture, approximately where the sign would be. In the second week of February, I will be going to Charleston with, and meet with the architect, and we will be gathering materials, let's say, for the new sign. And I have some contacts, and he has some contacts to get the materials so we can build the sign, again, that the picture, you have seen the picture, to build in the spring.
We do own the property.
And we do own that property, so it's forever ours, and no one can say, we've got to take the sign down. And again, we have the approval of Department of Highway, you know, remember the size of the sign? It's only the panel itself's size. They were counting first the supports and the base, and you do not have to count that. So they've given our blessing for the sign. Also, oh, that's it on the sign, any other questions? The stadium. We have not made any progress, but it would be, as suggested before, we do have our account, and we have ready to put in, or have put in, our hundred thousand. We are waiting for the County Commission, Mr. Thomas, to match that, and I would ask that a committee be formed, or a nonprofit committee that is already formed, to take up the responsibility of collecting more funds for the stadium. I advise the Board that they not get involved. It's cleaner, it's better for this Board not to be involved, and to put this nonprofit committee together, or someone else assumes that it already is nonprofit, as a committee to help gather funds to put into an existing account, possibly with your own account, for that stadium. But that would be my advice to the Board. And if you would like to pursue that, or if you've got some people you want me to contact, this is.
Probably not wise for us to garner donations. We can make it.
It is not in your best interest to solicit funds. We are instructed as Superintendent and as Principals, we cannot solicit funds. That's prohibited. And I would just advise the Board to be a lot cleaner and keep you all out of it, you know, at this point. It doesn't mean you can't talk to somebody, but when you're directly involved and you're linked, and people give you credit, and it's not a good thing. It becomes problematic.
Let me clarify now, the Board's committed, is that money been, that, or is it staying outside?
The Board has committed a hundred thousand to this fund for the football stadium, and that is on record, that is money that is there when needed.
So it's still in the Board's accounts?
Yes. And also, the County Commission kind of started this, and they had agreed to give us a hundred thousand matching funds, that then will be, I assume, I will have to ask Mr. Thomas if he had commented, but will soon be matched into that account.
I anticipate that the Board would transfer a hundred thousand dollars after this, other accounts set up, or will be done at a separate account.
This account is our account that we have now. Bertie, would you address that, as far as when do you think that money would be in account that would be?
We already have everything set up to, it's an investment-type account, of course it's not much, but it is an investment account. Everything's ready to go. I just need the go-ahead from Mr. Roach, whenever he says, you know, go ahead, whatever, then we'll move on. But I guess we're kind of waiting on the County Commission, but we've done everything on our part.
We're just waiting for the transfer of funds.
Yeah.
From the County Commission, we did commit the one hundred thousand, that we would then transfer to the Board once a hundred thousand is set aside. So once the money is set aside, we will transfer our money to?
Then I authorize, I've already been given the authority to do this, so Bertie in front of County Commission, I would like to transfer that money into that account as soon as possible, and if you would let me know so I can notify County Commission officially that it is in there. We have a meeting on Thursday at 10:00 AM. We'd love to have all of you there. Thank you.
And this account is a Board, Lincoln County Board of Education, and it falls under our umbrella for auditing and accounting and everything. Now, should someone come along with a nonprofit organization, and the Board would agree to then transfer that money, or jointly spend that money, would maybe the better term, to jointly spend it, and let it stay in our account, and then maybe they go on and start their nonprofit and collect additional funds.
Correct. The nonprofit would not have any of our money in it currently, or the County Commission's money, as I understand. With that, in answering anyone's question, again, I think if you, later on this week, if you would like to email myself or Brenda any names that you would like to include for me to approach, as far as organizing this committee as a person or more than one, I'd be happy to do so. If I do not hear from you at the end of the week, then I will pursue it on my own in trying to organize this. But that's, I would think that'd be long enough for you to give the names for people that you want me to check on or asked about. Again, it can already exist as nonprofit already. If we form a new committee, it is cleaner by council saying to make that nonprofit.
So if someone was out there and they say, I have five hundred dollars I'd like to give, write a check?
Write a check to our account.
To our account.
Yeah, Lincoln County Board of Education. And just put a note on it where it's.
Athletic field.
I would say new stadium. That way we won't be confused.
And I would just like to say, on behalf of the County Commission, it's a pleasure for us to be able to partner with the Board of Education in bringing this football complex to becoming a reality. I think that we have the best kids in the state, we have the best school system, we're moving in the right direction, and together, I think we can make better things happen for this county. So I, my hats off to each of you for taking the step to make this happen.
I just appreciate Dana answering your question. Yes, sir.
We would like you to go back and tell the other Commissioners also that we do appreciate their help.
I will do that.
We're very proud to have our Commissioners.
As far as dealing with the football stadium, I know that Dana Smith is probably the person who probably depend on the most, to maybe get a thought again of what we need to do, like what we need, as far as maybe.
Physical planning.
With the physical plan, and basically, well, I think it was probably a lot of companies that could, that would probably donate supplies, maybe not money with supplies, and if we could get maybe, I'm sure, some of these companies, if they do contact Dana Smith, that he would be able to give them maybe some direction of what, of what we need.
Yes, I will, when the committee is formed, I will share with them, and Dana, and this Board, kind of what it will look like in the cost and materials, and share that with you also, at least you have it. And if you're approached, and you can say, you know, here's what it is, I mean, you're not soliciting, but you're approached, and you can show them, and who you give the money to, and so forth.
Or supplies.
Or supplies, which is most of it. Well, I'm sure there's grants out there if we had someone to check on, that we could get to this, too.
Does anyone else have any, any other questions?
I have, no, about that, but I have, I would like the Board to consider applying coaches for these Math Field Day County winners.
I think what Mr. Curry's saying is, we have, you know, Math Field Day is kind of a bullfight. We have students at various middle schools, high schools, and those particular students now are really needing tutoring to take the Math Field Day test.
When it goes to regional.
Right.
I understand that the teacher, Hamlin, has volunteered a couple evenings a week, but in the past, that has not happened, Hamlin, happened to other schools. But I think we need to reimburse them, you know, and we're not talking about a very little amount of money, because they get a couple nights a week for two or three weeks after the county, until they go to the regional.
We will look into it, and we can email you a plan of what we can do. And I'll talk to our staff people and let you know what we can do with that.
Let me just declare my break. You're saying after the county?
After the county, the county winners, before they go to the regional. In the past, I can speak out here, because my grandson was involved, had no tutoring, only what he got at home, while he was not prepared to go to the regional.
Is that kind of a consensus by the Board? I think it is. Then, what would happen, we probably have to, before we can do everything, somebody would be posted, you know what I mean, and have to go through that, but whatever it is, we will proceed with it, knowing that the Board is behind that, so I'll work with Ms. Lucas to come up with the quickest and easiest, but legal way to get that done.
Would it be the same rate to pay like an average student, twenty-five dollars an hour?
Twenty, twenty-five.
I mean, at least it would be, something that's already going on.
Ms. Lucas. Now, I have to say, the teacher, Hamlin, had already said he would help, but, you know, I think, we will get on it tomorrow.
It's usually just involving two or two.
I have one thing, and I'm not even sure if it can be changed. I have some teachers who have contacted me about having to be at school on snow days an hour early. Is that, is that the way it is? They have to be there an hour before time?
Well, let me say this.
Like if it's two-hour delay?
They have to be an hour before. And that is because we don't know, things are up in the air, so instead of coming in at seven-thirty, hour seven-twenty, they can come in at eight-twenty, and the student will come in at nine-twenty. So it's, wherever it is, it's different times, but it's whatever the recording time is, they come in an hour later, for the teachers.
Well, their concern was that they had to meet their children, either standing by the road, waiting on the bus, or at home to get to the bus stop, and no one at home with them.
I understand the concern, the only thing I'd just share with the Board, and that you, whatever you all wish, can be done. Most counties do this same thing, it's report afterward. And what we try to do is look after our kids first. In other words, they're the priority for us, and we're responsible for them, and that is the normal way it's done in the past. If you want to change that, it's up to you all. But a lot of times, kids are dropped off early, in other words, they don't ride the buses in, they may be there when their mother or father goes to work, and then we have to have teachers there. So we're trying to get teachers there, not as early as normal, but at least enough to catch those early kids when they're dropped off. And there's a lot of them that don't ride the bus, that, like yours, you're talking about, they drop them off at school, and then we accept them on those snow days, but yet we have to have personnel there to accept them. So it's kind of, it's a tough situation.
I want the teachers to be there, you know, when the children get there, and I also understand that they can't drop them off.
Well, let me ask you this, I can ask Principals tomorrow what that situation looks like for them, and kind of get some feedback from them, and then share with you their thoughts, and let you know how they look at it, and if they think they can give some time, I have no problem, but I think they're the best judges of, of their, got to watch the kid. The other thing is that teachers sometime, and I'm personally, as a Principal, we have to kind of make sure our teachers get there, and they may be on the road, and they may be stuck somewhere, and then if they're there early enough, then we can make arrangements and know who's there, or look for who's there. So if they're coming in at the last minute, it puts more hardship on the Principal for making sure they have everybody covered, I'm talking about classes. But I will ask them and give you some feedback.
If you would ask them, maybe thirty minutes, maybe if they had to be there, an hour and a half, you know, rather than the two hours.
Like if kids report at ten, then their normal time is reporting, if it's seven-thirty, they're at eight-thirty, maybe they could report at nine. Thirty minutes, more. No, it's given, well, not at thirty.
If we can, but I mean, if it's putting our children there without supervision, I don't want to do that either.
And I'm sure they'll do whatever they think they can for the benefit of their employees, because we want to keep them, we appreciate them from other counties, and also, the highest priority, though, would be for the safety of the students. So they'll, I know they'll take that into consideration and do what they can.
This is consistent with what we've been doing for many years, that they, they come in our, for the reasons you stated here, to make sure that you're prepared for the kids.
I think you're spot on. Ask the specific Administrators, you know.
And if they feel like that it's not feasible to do that, then, you know.
At least we've asked for it, ten more.
Same practice.
Does anyone else have anything?
Brenda, would you give the Board the sheets on the Superintendent information? You ought to ask me, and I told you I'd ask you, Brenda, I want you to look at this, not tonight, but to take home with you, and then if you see some things that you'd like to see better, or improve upon it, would you let myself or Brenda know? But we attempted to accomplish what you had asked us before. Having said that, Brenda also has, I was asked about kind of clarifying or more clear in about the property, the amount that we have and so forth, and if I might ask Mr. Rainey, you'd help clarify, because I wasn't on the committee, and you were very close to it, and I'd ask you, because Carol's a Board member. We were, we know that you all have given, or voted to give us twenty-five thousand. In other words, it's one hundred and fifty by the Governor, twenty-five by County Commission, and then I was also told, and this is kind of unclear, that if we needed another twenty-five thousand, that it would have to wait to this year, meaning, you know, new budget time, to give us another twenty-five, that you all would do that. I don't know if there was a vote taken, a discussion occurred. You were kind of, probably with the County Commission a little bit, you know, in talking with them. I just want you to, if we could talk tomorrow, and see if there's any way that, for the committee's sake, because of what the Boone County gave the property, you know, the amount they gave for the property is outstanding, I mean, outstanding in a negative way, unbelievable amount, and if you could look at that for me, and see what your County, fellow County Commissioners would think about that.
I know that we have the twenty-five already set aside, and we haven't delivered on that, because we haven't been requested to give to the Board yet. So the only part that's gray is the, because I wasn't on the Commission, was the additional twenty-five.
Would you look into that for me, and if you could make the request from the Superintendent, that we would like to have that money for the committee's sake, so their amount is one hundred and seventy-five thousand, because I think they thought, as I thought, it passed on, it's around one hundred and ninety to two hundred thousand. And we just, we were a little short, and based on our Boone County decision, I feel a little, want to help as much as I can, and acquire some more money.
I understand, living in parks, I didn't realize I live in a gold mine.
Well.
If you're asking about sale my money, they use money.
That's part of the money that they were talking about, no, that's all, one eighty-one and two hundred thousand in total.
No, but you only have one hundred and seventy-five here. Did the Committee?
I don't think they got to raise that much. You want to address that, if you remember on the committee, how much you all raised, other than the County Commission and the Governor?
I attended some of their meetings, but I was a Board member then, so I didn't get intimately involved with the internal workings of the group. They did raise money, but I don't exactly.
No, they didn't.
I thought the church donated five thousand?
They did. I'm going to guess seven to eight thousand is what they raised, but that's just, I guess, it could be more than that.
Who would that contact as a person about that money, as far as the committee? I have Debbie, you know, Dennis.
Debbie Dennis would probably.
Be the best?
Yeah. Debbie or Billy Brock.
Okay, thank you.
And my question is, since we're looking at the twenty-five from the Commission and an additional twenty-five, is this an issue that, since it's so outstanding, as you stated, that the Board is thinking about appealing?
That's part of what I'm going to share with the Board. There is an appeal. There is an appeal currently occurring concerning the issue of the educators being banned, Boone County educators being banned from the jury selection. He, it will be appealed to the, someone other than the current judge that handled the case, I was told. And that is not any big hope, you know, but at least that's it. Other than that issue, there's no other appeals, other than that bit. And again, he's not asking us to get our hopes up on that. And that just, we're going to learn from what happens. He will contact us, our attorney, Mr. Bates.
Is the board being charged attorney fees for this appeal?
I, I think that it is, I don't know, but I don't think it's, it's much for what has to be asked because it's very brief, but I can find that out. And let you know about an additional charge, if any.
Well, I think it's a relevant question, in my opinion.
I would be glad to find out. And again, I will email tomorrow because that's easy to find out. And what the estimate, if it is cost, what that estimate would be for that appeal.
Do you know at this point, have they begun to, did you say they've already begun to proceed to do this?
I, I thought that I have that as a yes, but I wouldn't want to take it to the bank.
You can let us know both.
I'll let you know everything tomorrow. And again, it should be one paragraph, pretty brief. Having said that, I also have some information for you all. I'm going to pass out kind of briefly, certain things. This is one set, one set, another set, another set, another set. Did that get everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, this is all for reference to look at before the next board meeting. This is just where we are placed in our state. And if you look at where we are ranked, I'm trying to, if you would take some time to look at our RISA only, where we kind of fit. Because what I have done as far as coaches, or, and I've got some more information to give you, is I have looked at only our RISA to come up as exactly where we are. This shows it in the state, and if you take it down to the RISA counties, you can kind of see where we are placed. You know, in third, fourth, or sixth, as far as teacher salary, whatever, how many are there, service personnel, so forth. What I'm going to give you now is a sheet that shows you, and I have a reason for doing this. The question is looking at the disparity between certain coaching positions as relative to major sports. And I simply did something for you all's benefit. Most everything, if we took an average, if you look across there, this is an average of all the counties. And then you look at our, for example, in baseball, head coach, we are negative seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. If you go down to look at girls' or basketball, you will see that we are ahead of our RISA on average. You follow me? Now you're to look at this. Again, you look at it later and call me on any questions. And the thing that I think that really jumps out at me, if you look at, and football, and look at volleyball down at the bottom, to the negative down at the bottom, it's not highlighted. A very, a huge discrepancy. Now, what I'm going to give to you now, and I will explain once you get them, for your all's reference. No, no. All schools, all in the county, total. The last sheet that I have given you is a little different. If you compare this with what I just passed out to you, and I want to take, and this is no way am I recommending this, in no way do I am supporting either side of what you're, you're looking at. But you can see on the first sheet that I gave you that you're going to have to raise a lot of coaches' salary up to make them equal to the football and basketball and soccer. It requires a lot of raises for a lot of coaches. As I shared with you in the past, it's very difficult to give raises to one entity without others because we've had many instances where requests have been made from the principals, central office, many, many. What I have given you is, if you look at first example at girls' basketball, if you look at the girls' basketball salary on the first sheet I gave you, you will see four thousand dollars. If you lowered girls' basketball head coach to three thousand, and then you go across the page, you become in line with the other coaches. Another way of doing this, if you're looking at being equity across the board, is taking those coaches that are way out of line to the rest of our coaches in the county, plus they're ahead even in a RISA. And why do I make mention of that? Because when you start looking at the teachers, the service personnel, central office, treasurer, you name it, whatever category of these sheets, you will see that we're not number one necessarily. And again, only look at these in relationship to RISA, not the state. Then that gives you plenty of thoughts or information to prepare what you want to say at the next board meeting. Again, I am fairly neutral in this, except that I just always caution the board about raises for one group because it comes, it gives a lot of problems to you all in trying to, and others come in. But it's good information to look at and in the future even. And that's all that I have, is sharing information.
Thank you. No, I just, I don't know if it'll be now or if we can discuss this in the future. We first brought this up, and I, you know, have to digest this myself. But my, the concern, one of my concerns is that with our ban. I know we heard it through the football season and the number of ban participants we have. And I know I've talked with you about that, Mr. Roach, and I think we've got a plan that involves middle schools and all those kind of things. But I don't know if, if there are, we have commensurate people. I, I know we, we have a band director who works two-hundred-and-twenty days a week. But the assistant band director works two-hundred days. And then I see, just like tonight, we approved, you said that you do it annually, really good this conference. And part of this is where they go on, they're on the weekend. And I know the assistant band director works in conjunction very closely, probably he has to, in harmony.
For various reasons.
Exactly. Right. In other words, my point is that, you know, we want to focus on improving things. And I think that really is a focal point for the county, that we should have a band with more than twenty-five students. And there's a lot of reasons for that. I understand that. There's transportation, various things. But one of those, I think, relates to having adequate supervision and instruction there too. So as we do this, I'd just like everybody to consider ban as we look to improve it on a county basis at our high school and in relation with these other things.
Will do. And I think really what I was going to do is look at that together with other things academic over there. Where I look, this is athletic, and then I'm going to bring to you the next factor. You all said something to me about looking at our department heads or whatever else goes on, debate, that we look at everything and supplement those, but in a different category.
Okay, I understand.
And relate those to, again, to our RISA, because I feel that's the most easiest way to do it.
I understand. I agree. I, I didn't, when KK first brought this up, that's when I wanted to look at some of these other things and sign and catch them. So I agree with the department heads and some of the things, the central.
Mr. Curry and I were talking about that after the last board meeting, about the, the ban and how much, you know, that Kim and Dave are paid and, you know, the amount of work that they do.
They work two-hundred days, you know.
I mean, you know, and I think that was cut, I think they used to be paid two-hundred-and-twenty. Now we're going to pay for two-hundred. So.
I'll gather that information up also.
And something else, if I may, if I may add, whenever we do the scheduling for the high school next year, I know that there's a lot, if there's any way that we can work with, you know, I know that there are a lot of students that, that have to choose between maybe taking Spanish or taking ban. And, you know, I think, I think that's probably one of the reasons that we have such low numbers of ban. Is because kid, you know, students are, they have to choose whether they want to take Spanish or whether they want to take ban. And, you know, most of the time, we take, you know, students will take Spanish in preparation for college. And we're, we're losing a lot of, a lot of participants.
We will, we will look into it also. The same situation occurs for middle schools.
Right.
Because they have to take the virtual Spanish, and we can't offer everything due to confines of our personnel. But we will look at that, and we have a lot of people here still in that as far as our ban, trying to improve that. There was one, yes.
When do you see that? What is there?
Starting tomorrow. It won't take very long because if you, I'd like to have it sometime this week because I think it's very simple, and knowing that it goes up on February the fourteenth, it just gives us plenty of time. And also, you know, a week from now. You think of something, it doesn't mean it's too late because we'll still commodify it up to the last minute. But the board, changes that you bring to me have to be brought to the board. I don't want to make changes unless it's a clerical, you know, misspelling or a, something like that, grammar. I don't want to make changes without the full support. So if you bring it, early you can bring it, then I can bring it back to the board to say, here's a change and what it looks better to me, or you all decide.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to add?
I'd like to go back on something, still back to the judge's decision on that property, Brentville property. It just blows my mind. And I personally feel like that if we need to go back and go back to this again, that we need to do it. I mean, that is a ridiculous sum of money. And then I would like to know in relation to what we paid for this land over here in Hamlin, per acre, as to what we're paying for that land up there, per acre. I mean, I think that it would shock people. And then as far as the fact that, that the committee raised some money up there, that was wonderful. They should have never had to have even promised such a thing because I've never heard of that before in my life, of any committee. The money is there, and if, if we can get that to go in this, that's great. But to me, we need to buy this property. It's our school. And they need to use that money to further maybe a walking track or something that they need there in that area. But I think it's just wonderful that they, the citizens put out themselves to come up with a committee to raise some money to try to get a new school in that area.
Let me share this with you, and I think Thomas would be there to substantiate or agree to what I'm saying. We had the Hartz Intermediate School land that was there. And although it wasn't, this land's better than that land, that land was free. So at that time, under, I think, the board's agreement, and I can't recall, I'd have to look at the minutes, but especially the, the state would look at that and say, you know, you can't obligate yourself to this land when there's land there to build. And my, and I think, Thomas, if you recall that conversation that we had, and that the only difference is I would agree that this land's better, so therefore that's why that was put on their back. If we could not build the school there, although there was going to be cost, you had to demolish the, the school, destroy the football field, the curb, you know, the entrance where there was a lot of issues. But that was the reason that we went to other property, just for the record. I don't want anyone to think that we put it on their backs without knowing we had property.
I know you didn't.
But they chose, they didn't want to use.
They volunteered, and I think that's just wonderful.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that for the record because it, it comes up, and I didn't want to put the board in bad light at that time that they did that to the Hartz committee or to the people.
Right, right. No, nobody did anything to them. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that it's not usual that a community buys the property to build the school on.
No, they wanted, they wanted that field, and they wanted to keep it, and they did a nice job in gathering that money. It's just unfortunate. We need a lot more.
Yeah, but to think of how much per acre we're paying for that.
I just would simply like to say that, as I mentioned earlier, the partnership between the commission and the school board, that really was what surfaced at the point when we needed to look at different property. I think the community realized at that point that you were going to be faced with having a school in a location that wasn't, in our opinion, suitable because of the dangerous curve and some other factors, including the fact that we would have to later go back and buy property for a football field. So property was eventually going to be purchased anyway. So the community stepped up, and I know what Carol was saying, that it's, it's really a unique situation when a community takes to interest and says, you know what, we want to come up to the table. And I said that the local community raised seven thousand, but Mr. Roach knows that the one-hundred-and-fifty that came from Hamlin also was a result of those members of the community, probably the trials dating with him and networking. So it was much more than seven thousand.
Well, I simply asked that question because I looked at this, and I remembered that the, I thought that the community had raised some money. And I wondered if they ever come to the end or if it was ever, if they, you know. My question is, I guess it's, it's not on this sheet. And if it's not, it doesn't matter that way. I just want to know. And did, was it turned in or do they have it?
What you have is, again, I'll, I'll, I'll make it one more time. A hundred-and-fifty is in our coffers. It's ours. We have twenty-five voted on and permitted, and will be given tomorrow or three days from now, but it's already been voted on, so that's a hundred-and-seventy-five. Then there's some loose, what I'm going to call loose money, maybe the church, maybe some other money that I've got to contact whomever to get an in to our coffers. Then I'm hoping that, based on the committee and the county commission at that time, said that we, if we needed another twenty-five to make that appraisal value, that's what really was the appraised value, that that would be given another twenty-five thousand. They have to go back and make that decision, I mean, to vote on that. But I feel they, they, you know, if they come up with the two-hundred thousand, that's, that's all they raised. Even went to the governor, because I didn't have anything to do with, although I was invited, got the picture taken. I was just there as a token as far as raising the money. I didn't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, well, I think any, any entity that raises money for any school activity or facility, it's great.
And achieving a church as opposed to, at one time, gave us some money.
My last point, I'll be quiet. The, the community group within the community, I said, raised seven thousand or so. The reason they stopped was because they had the one-hundred-and-fifty from the governor, twenty-five from the county commission, and the, the appraised value at that point, they were right there at the appraised value. So they had no need to continue on to raise money where they would have continued on. So I want to make sure that it's clear that the community would have raised more money. And when I look at the one-hundred-and-seventy-five from the commission and the state, I look at that as coming from the community as well because the people there were the ones that went to the commission and went to Charleston, so they would have continued on.
I would ask you to re, reopen that committee. We need more. We've got some more trials to go.
We've got some more trials to go.
They're in Lincoln, they're in Lincoln Lake.
Don't you want to buy some property in Lincoln County?
I do.
Especially in Harts.
I have some property to sell in Harts.
It says a lot about Harts there. Trying to get their, trying to get a school through.
I'm just shocked as everyone else. Think so? I would have been, I'd probably just had a poll, gone up each one of them, say, how could you do that? What were you thinking when you made that decision?
I mean, even to ask that amount for your property, I mean, I would be embarrassed. I would be ashamed too. I wouldn't ask that for mine. God. I mean, gosh.
Sarah can't keep them out, Sharon.
Just pick yourselves up from the other boot strap.
That's right.
That you all can go with. If there's nothing we can do, we have to go. Does anybody have any, anything else that they would like to add or say or comment? And if, if not, then.
When's that due, the, to January twenty-seventh? Six o'clock, so the February the seventh.
So it'll be January the twenty-seventh? Does that make a motion that we adjourn from January the twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, six o'clock, have the county office? Let's be begging, it's been said. Is this all in favor?